All right, it is 7:15, so I'm going to call the Wednesday of January 31st, 2024 meeting of the Westboro Public Library Board of Trustees to order. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. We're going to start our agenda with candidates for the trustee, library trustees. As you should, I'm not driven on that, although I think we sent out an email. But we have five candidates that have successfully pulled and returned papers and will appear on the ballot, and they're for three seats that are all three-year openings. One is our very own Janine Mindra. We have Mary Christensen and Michael Karp here today with us. Thank you so much for joining us. I just wanted to say to everybody, I really appreciate your passion for the library and being willing to get involved and take the first steps, and so I really appreciate it. Wish everybody good luck and hope we get a chance to work with you. So, Phil? Yeah, sure. Our other candidates as well is Gregory Moberg and Boyd Conlin. We have time in our agenda for that. If you guys want to take a minute to introduce yourselves and say hello, but don't feel like you're obligated or want to put you on the spot, but you're welcome to if you'd like.
Yeah?
Yeah, sure. Also, I'm just going to ask, if you want to say something, come up here, because since we have Westboro TV here, why not say hello to the world of Westboro? Yes.
Thank you for having me. I'm Dr. Mary Botticelli-Christensen. There's another Mary Christensen in town, so I go by both my names.
So you're not the real town?
No. Thank you for pointing that out. I am not. I am a retired college professor of education. I have been, libraries have been a significant place in my life since I was five years old, where I learned to spell and write my name so that I could get my library part. And I practiced and practiced, and being dyslexic, it was tough to learn how to write it so that librarian would know it. And I got my little card with the middle link on it, where they would stamp your number, and I bought a little tiny wallet to put it in, because I felt for the first time that I was actually growing up. And in every major point in my life, libraries have been either the safe place I would go or where I went to learn. I worked as a work-study student during my undergrad and graduate years. I used it with my dissertation. I've started three libraries and two here in Westboro. One for the complex in which I live at Windsor Ridge. A lot of the mothers can't get out, so they don't have the second car. So the library, the friends, allowed me to take some of the books after the book sale and start a library there. And my daughter is the head of the Home for Homeless Veterans in Boston, and my husband and I started a library there, and they also helped us there, so library is great. And the hardest thing I did when I moved here was separating myself from my massive collection of books that were in my house in West Hartford to come to a townhouse. And it was very painful, but that's why I've come here, to feel like I've gone again. So I am happy to support you, and I'm a lover of books, and I embrace books, and I stand with the band.
Hi, welcome. Michael, would you like a chance to meet? Welcome, Greg. We are just introducing the candidates that are here, so in a minute, if you would like a chance to say something, you can, but I don't want to put you on the spot either.
Well, I'm Mike Karp, and I'm trying to, you wouldn't be surprised to have been called up here. So I'll try to limit my embarrassment by just talking about things that are library-related. I spent a great deal of my life in libraries, in libraries, both in the U.S. and abroad. When I, at an earlier stage in my life, I was an archaeologist. I actually excavated libraries. And if you ever did anything translated from Hittite into English, I may still be able to, I'll remember a few words. In regards to libraries, I have to say that one of my favorite memories was of my younger daughter Nina, who, when it was time for her, for us to select a present for her 16th birthday, asked for a copy of the OED. And I expected all sorts of other things, but she fooled me, but only a little bit. And she went on to use it quite well. In terms of my work background, I was a teacher for 10 years and, excuse me, for nine years, and then decided to support my family a little more vigorously, so I went into high tech. And then, when I retired, went back to teaching and was working with special ed kids to stay here in town. I've been in town since 2001. As far as this library is concerned, it's got to be protected. You have very good people working here. I think we need to stand by them. I think it's important for us to make sure that the people who leave this building leave the ability to think in a critical fashion. And I think that I certainly wouldn't want anybody else telling my kids what to read. And I certainly wouldn't want the same thing to other people. We have an opportunity for parents to be good parents, and let's let them apply the filters that are appropriate for their family situation at the home, and let's make everything available to them. So that's it. Thank you very much, and look forward to having the opportunity to talk to you again.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure.
Give us a try here. So I'm Greg Overe, good evening. I'm going to say anything, so this is going to be completely off the hook. I've, at the point where I'm in my life, I've had some more time, and as I've always enjoyed the library, I thought, I would like to help be an advocate for it. And so I come to this with no agenda other than wanting to help. I suppose my agenda is, I have to concoct something, was we have a gem of a resource here. What this little place does, little prudamoni that it's allowed to have, is just amazing. And I was so frustrated, Elizabeth, no, my wife, was so frustrated with how it just didn't work with the town for trying to find through the project last, that it's just stayed with me, that, you know, there's so much that this can do, and we have to be able to find a way through this pickle of a financial versus building renovation needs situation. But it's more than that. I want to be an advocate for the library, for what libraries can be, both online, you know. In the year 2024, they're much more than the simple library I worked at, you know, comparatively back in the '70s, when I was doing microbe copy and doing animal magazines and newspapers on two rolls that probably nobody ever looked at again, you know what I mean? And so it's just amazing. But what goes on here, it's just a gem, it's a joy. The community that doesn't realize it, I'm sorry they don't realize it, and there's a lot of people that do, but what Maureen and the staff here do, kudos, it's just marvelous. So anyway, because I have time, I can try to help, and so here I am. Here we are.
Thank you so much. Welcome, and good luck to everybody. All right, so that brings us to, oh, we're so on time. The Director's Report.
So I've been starting off my Director's Report with some statistics, the ones that I think are notable. We have our circulation statistics for December, which is just over 14,500 plus another 3,800 electronic items, so check out a total of 18,451, which is pretty solid for December. As of earlier this week, we had 14,398 cardholders. Of those, a little over 11,000 are Westboro residents, so that's pretty fantastic. Something that was really interesting, usually when I do this report, I look at what the busiest hours of the week are, and it always falls on Saturday or Sunday. Interestingly enough, the busiest hours in this past month were Friday from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., Wednesday at 1:00, and Thursday at 3:00. Not sure why, we didn't have programs going on at those times, but that was when we checked out the largest number of items. And our top circulated titles were exactly the same for December as they were for November, which were, and they were children's books, three of them. It was the Dogman series by Dave Filke, the Babysitters Club graphic novel series, and the Bad Guys, which is a kids' graphic novel series. And it was fascinating that those were the top ones in November. I did want you to know, our adult nonfiction re-cataloguing project is getting closer. Our original goal is to have it done by the end of December, but we're not quite there yet. We had to pause because the ceiling, the fan unit in the ceiling that caught fire in February of '22 finally got replaced, so we had to pause the project so that we could move things off the shelf, move the shelf out of the way, let the workers come and do their work, and then put the shelf back and put everything back on it. So we're working through that process right now. The good news is, the unit is up and running, and it's nice and comfortable on that side of the main floor again, so yahoo. Our English conversation circles have started, and they are off to a great start. I have actually, like quietly tiptoed through to grab the extension cord for our meeting, and there was just such a buzz going on in the room, like so many happy people, like smiling and talking, it was wonderful. Also wanted to invite all of you to sign up for our Winter Wellness Program, which is a walking program that Tracy and Jen thought up, and there's a lot of wellness-related events going on for adults, one of whom is going on right now on the main floor. Madison Smith, who owns the Varsity Nutrition over by Valari's Martial Arts, is here talking about the types of smoothies and the different healthy type drinks that she makes and how that fits into a healthy lifestyle. We had a couple of programs scheduled about your feet that we had to reschedule, but they will be rescheduled, be coming up later in the spring, and there's just all kinds of wellness stuff happening. But the walking challenge is, you get to pick which one. I signed up for it too, and you can cross the Shire, from the Shire to Modor, you can walk in the Lands of Fire and Ice, or you can travel the Hundred Acre Wood. And being the past children's librarian that I am, I signed up for the Hundred Acre Wood.
I have to say, you got to spell Modor right.
Oh! Sorry, sorry. My apologies. But programming has been great, off to a great start, really well attended. And I just wanted to update you on a couple of projects I've been working on personally. I know we're going to have new trustees after March, and all of you, when you were new, had a meeting with me, and we sat down and I gave you a binder that had everything you needed to know in it, or most of you. Kate's looking at me like puzzled. We may never have.
Yeah.
But instead of handing everyone a binder, I've transitioned that to electronic so that you'll all have access to it, and you can always refer back to it when you need it. It will be in the trustees folder. A side note, I'm going to be transitioning everything that's in Google Drive over to Dropbox. Dropbox is just an online, it's very similar to Google Drive, and I will probably do a little training at an upcoming trustees meeting to get you familiar with how to open documents and how to, you know, where to look for them. The link will change, but the town transitioned off of Google earlier in the summer, so my account on Google is going to go away eventually, but we can't, they can't take it away until I transition everything over to another platform, so more to come on that later. You should have all gotten the form, the Google form that I created, that asked you to type in a short bio, a couple sentences, and...
I did get that.
I'm looking at all of you.
I got it. I put a link in there.
Because Dot gets the gold star. She built it out.
Yeah, I was going to be late.
She was first, and she filled it out and sent the picture, and so what I'm looking, it's just a very short couple sentences, you'll see when you go to the form. And there's a spot at the bottom to attach a photo of yourself, so that I can have a page on the website, so we can see who you are. That's all.
That's the manual, right? The digital manual?
Yeah, that's part of our board manual. And then I was working on our policy manual, which is in my goals for this year, if you remember way back to the beginning of the fiscal year. And I'm completely rebuilding it from scratch, so we're probably going to need one of our spring meetings just dedicated to reviewing that, and, because there are some policies that need to be deleted, because they've been incorporated into other policies that we have approved, and they're just duplicated, and things, some that we don't need anymore, there's, it was just a chaotic mess, but I'm making good progress on that. And then Janine and I presented a really fun library trivia and feedback session at the Senior Center. We had 20 people show up, which is, was a fantastic turnout. Every chair that they put out for us was full. They had great questions, they had great comments, they learned a lot, and we didn't make it onto their schedule for February, but the people in the group really wanted us to come back, so Janine's working on getting us a date in March, and our goal is to make that a monthly visit. So that's what's up with outreach. And then, just a heads up that the, this is legislative breakfast season, so those who've been on the board for a little while may remember me talking about legislative breakfasts. They happen around the state, usually in February and March, and I've already been to one that was in Hope Dale, but the one in Worcester is this Friday, it starts at 7:30 a.m. And Kate Donahue will be there, Jim McGovern will be there, and a lot of the central mass legislators will be there. And the main focus this year at the state level for libraries is, there are two major efforts. One is on ebook pricing, which I think we've talked about before, you're all familiar with that. And the other one is an anti-book ban bill. And there's a couple different versions of that, that they're, all the different committees where it's been assigned are all working together to try and consolidate it into one. So I may reach out to you again at some point and ask you to submit written testimony. There was a legislative briefing for the legislators today on the ebook bill, I believe. And that one I was not able to make because I was taking a contract management class for my procurement certification, so I couldn't go to the legislative briefing. But the breakfasts are open to everyone, so if you're interested and want to attend, I'm going to be there. You can ride with me if you want, I'm going, so.
Is this Friday at 7:30 in the morning?
Yes, it starts at 7:30 in the morning. I know, I know. And then one last thing that was not in my written report, but it is in the Google Drive. After we had some feedback about lighting in the library, lighting levels, I got a light meter, and I've been, my goal was to do it more often, and I've only done it twice, but I've gone around to certain spots on the, on the main floor in particular, to measure the light level, and it's measured in lux. So I looked up, I did a little bit of research. The Illumination Engineering Society of North America recommends 300 to 500 lux for library reading and office space, and 200 to 500 for stacks, 200 to 500 for, like, retail sales, so that would be like our circulation desk. And what I found is, our whole main floor is pretty much in the range. The reading area in the back of the main floor is generally around 300. If you turn on the reading lamp, it's over 1,000, so it's far above the recommended light levels. Interestingly, the one that is really deficient is the circulation desk. That came in at 120 the first time that I took it, and 133 when I did it again, and that should be a minimum of 200. So I've already talked to Cliff, we're waiting on the electrician to come and put some brighter light bulbs in. We think that just because that ceiling is so high, we're using the same bulbs as other places, but it's trying to light a much bigger area, so we're hoping that's going to work.
So what is, what's going to happen?
We're going to put in brighter lighting in that area.
Is that just new light bulbs, or is...
It's, right now, yeah, it will be LED. So the, I'm going to keep taking readings, the both days unfortunately were cloudy. I'd like to get some readings on a brighter day, so I could, and more frequent, so you'll see that spreadsheet kind of data will continue to appear in there as I choose different conditions and light it up. And what you'll see is, the yellow ones are like way over, the beige ones are kind of areas to watch that might be a little concerning, either too high or too low, and then the ones in red are, like, the circulation desk is the one in red that's like so deficient, but we'll fix that, so just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you for that. I looked at it, but I was like, I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
Yes, yeah.
I have two suggestions for that. One is, get some at night also.
Yeah.
And the other is, I'm sure you've thought of this, don't do anything expensive and permanent.
No, 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 no.
You may want, I don't know whether LPA has done this, but you may want to know about this soon.
I will let them know. I don't think they have ever looked at that, but...
I don't know if they're sure.
But I will ask.
LPA is the architect working on it.
That's great. Well, thank you. So anyone have any questions about the Director's Report?
I just wanted to go for the Senior Center visit, what...
So we have outreach down here too, I'm going to talk about it a little bit more in a couple minutes.
Yeah, if no one has any questions, let's just roll right into outreach. Thank you so much, by the way, for doing that, and I've heard wonderful reviews from it, so I really appreciate your time and thank you for work.
Well, you know, I have to thank the two Lennys, who, when I was standing collecting signatures last March outside Roach Brothers, and they stopped and stood in the freezing cold and said, okay, what we want from you trustees is, you need to come to the Senior Center on a regular basis, you need to keep us updated, you need to hear our strong opinions and our ideas, and we don't want to stand up at town meeting, so come. And so it took me a while to do it, but you know, it was, it was great. I mean, they were very receptive, they were excited about, but an interesting thing that we learned is, I asked them if they see our posts on social media about our events, and they don't at all. And so they gave us their strong opinions about what they needed us to do, and we need to post the actual flyers at the Senior Center, at all the housing developments, at the local churches, and then we need to get our flyers into the newsletters for the housing developments. And so now we're working on that, we're trying to get the, you know, figuring out who the team is that's going to take these things. And I'm working with the Senior Center to see if I can get permission to put up one of the signs like we have at the town hall, so there's a dedicated space for our flyers, so it won't be confusing. But I have to do some negotiating on that, so I'm working on that. And then we have another talk scheduled for March 6th with the Rotary Club. We have one on April 2nd with the Civics Club. We're working on another one for the Senior Center on March 15th, and then I'm going to contact Walker Meadow and see if we can get one scheduled for February. And then, do we want to talk at all about the Get to Know, or we want to wait on that?
We have to wait on that.
We will wait on that.
Okay.
Can I, can you send out, well, I guess it'll be in the minutes, right? When the, like, the timings and the dates for those?
I actually put a little, a list into the Google Drive. That's called Public Presentation Schedule and List of Dates. I just added that today because I needed that for my own organization.
I mean, Civics Club is April 2nd?
Yeah, yeah. And I, to add to that, on March 5th, Mary and I have been invited to be guests on Shelby Marshall's TV show.
Oh!
To talk about the town meeting.
Which day?
March 5th.
I'm going to have to talk to Shelby.
That's a good thing.
Janine, do you mind if I turn up for those?
No, I love it, and we should have said that Ed came to the one at the Senior Center too, and he gave a really nice update on the repair project, and people were so grateful. And a woman came up to me at the end and she said, "I am so glad you explained this repair project to me, because I've been so against spending any more money, because how are us Tony Townies going to afford to stay living here? But now that you've explained everything that's broken, I understand." So it was really, you know, a wonderful, and it was wonderful to have Ed there, you know, from the building committee, caring about them.
I know, so my presentation was not very polished at that time, but I'll get, I'll get better.
I feel like you're going to have a few more opportunities, I guess.
It's, just to, I'll bring this up later, we're going to spend a committee time.
So thank you. Any other questions about community outreach? Keep up the good work. So, oh, we totally did. Okay, so we're going to scooch back a little bit. We have on the agenda candidate night for library trustee seat discussion. So last year, we also had a contested race, and we ran a candidate's night where we invited the candidates for library trustee here to do a little discussion with people, question and answer session, and we were, Maureen and I were thinking about doing it again. So what is your feelings on it? I think a lot of us were there last year, so let me, let me hear what you think.
I thought it was really helpful last year, and even as a trustee, but as a voter, I'm sure it was, just to see what different people wanted to say and share about their perspectives. I think it's valuable.
This is the one that you did at the Select Board? No, the other.
This is the one that we did in the main floor of the library, where we had all candidates come and nearly as came to.
Oh, that, yes, yes, yeah, I thought that was good. I thought it was good. I don't love doing it, but...
I know, and I know that the town is still doing the total candidate's night, but given that...
I think it's nice to have both of those, though.
Okay, good. What's the feedback today?
People, people came to it and asked us questions, you know, and I thought it was nice to be able to look them in the face and talk to them.
And from what I could tell, it was a little bit different people that came to the other one, so I think any chance to get candidates out in front of people is a great opportunity, so.
I think anytime people are thinking of hearing about our libraries, and they're also then hearing about our library, and I think it's good.
So last time we did it in the evening, and when we set it up, I sent, Janine, you probably remember, I sent the questions ahead of time to the candidates so they could be prepared. Deb, you remember too?
Yes.
So they could be prepared, and it wasn't hard, it wasn't like scary, it was just pretty much...
It wasn't scary.
Oh, it was too scary.
And it was just a couple of questions, and then we left lots of time for Q and A, and people took the opportunity to ask questions, so.
Well, you gave us interesting questions, so it was fun to answer them. So that's, that's nice, you know, to be able to say what you love about the library and what you'd like to try to do, so that's cool. So thank you.
Awesome.
I agree, I looked at last year's, and it was very helpful to, to meet the candidates. I think, I think I saw at least Michael and Janine there.
And Dot?
Yeah, so.
And, and...
I came.
I was...
You were running too.
That's right, you got the...
Dot came like the minute before she left for Florida, and then zoomed for the townwide one from Florida.
I thought it was, as a candidate, I didn't think it was too much of a house, I thought it was appropriate, and, yeah, I thought it was, I think it's great to give people the opportunity to ask questions. Felt like there was some real kind of engagement with the audience during that Q and A part.
Yeah, that was fun. It was really cool. And I thought it was so impressive to hear what everybody had to say. This was a really impressive group of people, you know, and it was fun.
And it's also, if people are mostly interested in the library, they can just come here and not have to go through the whole candidate list.
Yeah, right, and, yeah, there's not a lot of contested seats this year, so it'll be good. We're going to be looking at, towards the end of February, and we'll connect with candidates to make sure that we get a date that works, so be on the lookout for an email from Maureen about that. Okay, so any questions about that? And then we're going to roll over to Ed and Building Repair Project.
Okay, so start the, Building Committee's met twice in January, once on the 16th and once yesterday. We received the final schematic design and the initial cost estimates on the 16th, literally on the 16th, so they didn't have time to look at them, which is fine, but again, yesterday's gave everyone a chance to review and formulate questions and understand what we were looking at. And I will say, we expressed our disappointment in that to our commercial partners. So... So overall, some, this is a rehearsal for my speeches. Our goals for the building project as a whole, we want to do needed repairs and maintenance in the libraries, of which have been deferred for years because we were hoping to get the larger renovation. We want to, that's gonna trigger a new, that will cost enough to trigger a lot of changes and updates, things to comply with the relevant building codes and American for disabilities act codes. On top of that, we want to make cost-effective program changes, the things that we can do without great expense that would, that are really important to patrons in the library. And we wanna do all that in a budget that's acceptable to the town. So what that's come to in the, this design, we're relocating the team room, so that, last, last month, we had somebody who was complaining about the team room being right at the front entrance, so we used that complaint. We're adding three bathrooms on the main floor, which is better than the one, I happen to notice we have at its moment.
Yes.
We're gonna redo the children's program room, which is right over through there. We're gonna replace both roofs, which are both getting close to the end of life. We can upgrade all the sort of, those are the visible things, except we're gonna refinish essentially everything, paint, carpeting, the ceiling's gonna wind up getting redone. And there's sort of the, under the skin things, we'll be upgrading the electrical systems, upgrading, completely replacing the data system, redoing the plumbing, because among other things, we have to handle 3D toilets and the fire suppression system. And I guess the other sort of visible change is gonna replace the circulation desk in close consultation with the librarians who use it all the time. We're also, so those are things we, we know we're gonna do. One of our residents asked, well, what about, are you planning to redo the front entryway? Because it's the, the front entryway is not ADA compliant right now. It's got stairs. So the architects recognized that before we even brought it up to them and have put in an alternate to do that. So that's something that we can add, including in the cost. We hope we don't have to do it, and we plan to apply for variance and not do it. But that's about half a million dollars to add, to do that. So that's one reason we hope to avoid it. The other is doing that would really trash the aesthetics and history of that entrance. You'd ultimately, you'd have to take out, we've got the, the two winding staircases that go up to the upstairs. One of those would be gone and be replaced by a wheelchair lift. So as I said, we, we are gonna apply for variance for that, hope we get it for a multitude of reasons. So the current schematic design, Maureen sent you a packet with that stuff a couple days ago, so I'm not gonna bring it up. We don't, it's, we don't have anything to show it on with in any case. If people are interested or have questions about it, I can talk to them now, or I can, I can address them now, or I can talk about them later after the meeting.
And all that's in the drive?
It's in the building committee drive.
It's in the building committee drive for anyone watching it.
So we got an email with that?
I believe there's a link in there.
I think so, okay.
Yeah. I'll see, there's, there's a schematic design, which is really high level, it's one page. And then there's the cost estimation design, which is really detailed.
Yeah.
I don't know if you, I don't know, I, I was, I dug into it yesterday, I'm gonna draw this drop, because, okay, we're gonna have a Wi-Fi thing here, and here, and here, and here, and here.
I, I think I didn't get that, I don't sure I got that email. I'm gonna have to check my spam and see if it's in there, because I would have looked at that.
I, I have printouts of the, of the drawings that I can.
Those are the first drawings that they did, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw those. I liked those a lot. Those are beautiful.
The detailed ones are.
Attached to the same.
They're, they're, they're very detailed.
So the, the new ones are a lot more detailed.
Well, they, yeah, the, yeah, so I.
Oh, I, trustees might not have gotten that. I've only gone to the building committee. I mean, I'll forward it now.
Okay. Yeah, but if you're curious about, the, the cost estimate is very detailed. It says, you know, there's a door in A3 and it'll cost $279, and I'm making all that up.
Yeah.
You can find A3, all the detailed drawings, and find the door. So.
So, but it's also important to know.
These are not final.
They're not final. The costs are not exact.
Yeah, and I'm about to get to that.
They picked a door, but it might not be the door that ends up there, so it's all very.
It's hypothetical.
Yes.
It's, it's hypothetical, but it's a good deal less hypothetical than the initial cost estimate we got several months ago.
Okay.
So there, we're just, we're sort of narrowing down. And to that, there's still certainly room for error in here. And there will be room for error until we actually get a bid package back from a contractor, and then that's numbered, which, assuming that we go through with the process, that'll be in about a year. So given that there's some uncertainty there, we have tried to err on the high side, because I, for one, and I think this is true with the entire building committee, don't wanna go back and ask for more. Much better to come back and say, now, we, we estimated by a little, overestimated a little bit, and we've returned X amount of money to the town. So, so anyway, that, if you're looking at the estimates, that's what we are, where we are. One other thing is, we voted yesterday to use, and this may be a little technical, please quack me if it is, there's two ways to do these construction projects. It can be straight, one is design, bid, build, where the architect makes a complete design, you send that design to a contractor, they give you a bid price, and then you build it. The other is called construction manager risk, where you get the, the construction company involved much earlier in the process. They help with the design, and that helps make sure that when the time comes, you can actually build it, and they found whatever problems or more of the problems that might result. So advice from our experts, and we have some experts on this on the committee, Bob Petricelli, and then we have our vendors who are also, they live at this all the time, is that this project is small enough and well-defined enough, the design, bid, build project is at least as good as construction manager risk. And based on the estimates, it's about a million dollars less expensive. So the committee voted yesterday to go with the design, bid, build method.
Say that again, Ed.
Design, bid, build.
Nine, bid, and build.
Yeah.
Is that hyphenated?
Nope.
You know, it's usually just DBB.
Design, bid, build.
Yeah.
Build method. Define it one more time for me.
Design, bid, build.
Which means? I mean, I understand it, but to write it is something.
The architect designs it. Then you put it out for bid. And the contractor gives you a price. And you, you look at your contractors and you pick the lowest, I think, I think you have to pick the lowest price for this process, but I'm not sure.
It's the lowest price that is.
For a qualified bidder or something like that, yeah.
It's called responsive and responsible. So responsive means it meets all the, this contractor meets all the criteria. They're not like debarred, they're, you know, capable of doing the job, they have enough personnel to dedicate to it. And responsible means that they can deliver the project theoretically on time and on budget. And, yeah. So it doesn't have to be the absolute lowest bid. If we find that there's, there's an issue with the lowest bidder, we can choose a different one.
But in any case, that is in the price.
So explaining this to the public might be easier than explaining that other method, because is this more similar to how you do opening projects out in the regular world?
Yes. So. Yeah, this is, it's, it's easier to understand and.
And cheaper.
And a million dollar savings is really, really easy to explain. Yes.
I feel like I'm on Groundhog Day here, because we went through all of this before in preparation for the state grant, which we didn't.
Right.
But the design, bid, build, and.
Yeah, we, we chose to go with the construction manager risk, I said last time, because that's.
It was a bigger project.
It was a much bigger project, and it was a little bit less well-defined, and there was more work involved and more actual construction involved. So again, our experts, I think they were more on the fence this way, but Bob Petricelli, who's on the building committee and is very knowledgeable, really recommended, see him at risk that time. And he is, he's, he's a big fan of it, but this time he switched to design, bid, build.
And it makes sense. It fits the goals of the committee. It fits the goals of the town, so.
We're not knocking down big walls.
Right.
We're trying to do the best, tightest project that we can.
Yeah.
A million dollars less, it sounds good to me.
And I think we should say that a lot, because we're doing something that's a million dollars less. We should really.
I actually don't think so. If it pops up, that's fine, but I don't want to have to explain, I don't think any of us want to stand up on the town meeting floor and explain the difference between those two methods.
I mean, I do that educating a head of town meeting.
Yeah, it should, yeah, a head of town meeting, yeah.
And it's also, using the other method brings a construction manager onto the project early, so they help with the design, so that what we're getting is a buildable project that there's no room for error. And there's a lot of advantages to doing it that way, so I don't wanna leave the impression with the town that that's a bad way to do projects, because that.
No, go ahead.
We might.
Future projects.
Someone might do that later.
Had we done the, the big project, I think it would have been a way to go.
Yeah.
And if, you know, if the town decided to build a new school, or, you know how they did fails?
Stan Agres.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So with all that said, the current estimate for the total project budget is $15,816,049 with all the alternates. That includes having to build the ramp out there. There's a number. And it's roughly half a million less than that without, $15,225,688. Let me make this bigger, because I would be peering at that. There you go. For, if you've looked at the building committee documents, they also, there's another document with what we're going to be asking for the March town meeting this year. They currently say $2,477,352. That is actually incorrect. And the reason is that the project owner's project manager who put that together included a million dollars for moving and relocation expenses, temporary library. He, he put it in really as a placeholder, he brought it up at yesterday's meeting, and we agreed that that's gonna include, that would include like leasing whatever temporary space we, we lease if we do, and moving, you know, we're not gonna be spending that this next year, although we will need to seem subject to plan for it and to find the space, maybe, who knows what, there will, there will be expenses there. So we've asked him to redo the ask for this town meeting with whatever, with a reasonable estimate of whatever expenses we'll need for planning. So that, that will bring this, this ask down, but all that money's gonna go into the next ask, so.
So that would be added on to the 15.
That will be added on the, no, it's part of the 15 million.
Oh, it's part of it.
Part of the 15 million.
Part.
Yeah, the split is, it's, it's 2.4 million now, 13 point something million in 2025 right now. So if we take, say, $500,000 off it now, now we'll add $550,000 onto it in 2025.
Okay.
Do we think that's gonna be an ask, a bar, I mean, a borrow?
Yes.
It will be a borrow. Yes, and it will require a two-thirds majority. Let's see.
Can you explain the alternates one more time?
So these are things that we may or may not need, and they, we have included them in the cost because we might need them. If we can't, for instance, get the variance for, for the ADA, we'll have to expend that. And we want to, as I said, we don't wanna come back and ask for more.
The front entrance?
That's the, the front entrance there, yeah. So we're hoping, there's a small, a much smaller variance for replacing the carpeting upstairs as opposed to covering it with plywood and keeping it, and removing the plywood. But that's 17,000 something, if I remember correctly, so. It's, it's not pocket change, but it's not a large part of the total project budget. We should have the final value on Tuesday, next week. And I'll also say there are several opportunities for value engineering, which could bring the cost down. We're staying at the high end now, but we will be looking for ways to bring the cost down when we did the detailed design. And I can't estimate what those are gonna be yet.
Yeah, we can't value engineer a project that we haven't designed yet.
Haven't designed yet, yeah, so. Okay, so questions or comments on that?
Well, one thing I think people would really like to hear is that the team room is gonna move. It's not set yet, but I think that people are talking about this every day in the library because they have concerns about it, so if there's some way that we could make that known, so that they feel like, oh, they've been heard, and, you know, I don't know how we do that, but it would be nice for.
I think we can work that into the presentation, and that's why one of the renderings, they gave us two renderings to, as part of the deliverables for the project. And that's why one of them is the front reading room, that kind of gives you an idea of what it would look like, and the other one is the team room.
So which presentation are you talking about?
Like any of the presentations going forward.
Well, no, it's sort of standard, but this is, this is the view of the front reading room, right back corner of the library, standing next to, if you're standing next to the entrance and looking back toward here, toward the fireplace.
Got it. Oh, okay.
And this would be.
And this would be.
That would be from the back of the team space. Being forward.
Up there.
Is, to orient you, the blue wall with the screen would be the, the back of the wall that it shares with the current local history. And so it's basically where the adult fiction is right now. It would take up that.
The team room, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be an enclosed.
What is your concern?
So that people are coming into the library every day, people who used to use the reading room, and they're very unhappy about it, and they're talking about it every single day, and they don't know this. And I, you know, when I, when I was collecting, when Mike and I were collecting signatures, we would say to all of them, well, attend the building committee meetings, because they're talking about this, you know, but I don't think that's happening. And so it would be nice for them to have another way to, and I don't know if they're gonna come to the presentation, so I don't know if we could post something for them, or.
So I, and I can ask Christina to do display boards. We did this for the last project, and we just put them on easels.
I think that would be nice, and then have the librarians be able to explain it, so they could say, you know what, they heard you, look at this. Here's what we're working on to get it back the way you'd like it to be.
So they're, they're concerned about what they're gonna lose with the team room moving?
No, they're concerned with what they lost from the team.
They want this space.
In the reading room.
Oh, okay.
They want that space back. Very angry that they're in the back of the library instead of their, in their reading room, their treasured reading rooms. And since that was really heard and people are working on it, that they don't know, so I, I couldn't say that to them at that point.
So you want them to know they're gaining it back?
Yes.
I think you can, you can certainly say our schematic design includes moving the, moving the team room.
Okay.
And.
But then I think if there was a board, that they could see it, and then the librarian would be able to say, instead of having to just.
And I think Mary mentioned it at the meeting last week, talking to the, I, I can't remember her name, but the woman who was rep, said she was representing people that she knew.
Julie Squires.
Julie Squires. And hope, I'm hoping she was able to communicate to some of the people she knows, so people can say, you know, this is getting you what you want.
Yeah.
And things take time.
Yeah.
But it would make things. Oh, man.
Yeah. Okay, any other thoughts or questions?
I just have a general question about, you know, when we, when we hear that people, I just have a general question about, you know, when we, when we hear that people, the librarians are getting feedback. Is it mostly verbal, people just coming up to the desk and saying it? Yeah, okay.
We put out a suggestion box like we discussed.
Yeah.
But at an earlier meeting and.
Is there ways to keep track of that and, you know, just kind of keep us in the book for what we're.
We, I can ask them too, it's, it's hard in the moment.
More, yeah, work to do, but.
Even just to check, I got this, I got a comment, check.
I wonder, I wonder if we put the comment box back in that back part of the library. I mean, I showed it to somebody who was talking to me about that and wasn't pleased with it and went back. But I thought maybe it's also uncomfortable because it's up at the desk and if it were back where people go and sit, maybe they would feel like picking up a pencil and.
I don't know, partying. Party and get people, get people feedback, I don't think.
To write, well, it's hard, it's hard to write things down.
Yeah.
It doesn't feel good.
Right.
People to do, but if we, if, as the current, it would help to kind of know what people are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In terms of recording the feedbacks, if, it just, this is just a thought, make a list of sort of common feedbacks. Stick it up, put it on the desk and just say, I heard about this, I heard about this.
Or even someone text like if, you know, if the librarian gets it, if I want to text it to me, you know, or just something, just like even a quick thing and maybe I could. Yeah.
So you're suggesting like sort of some common categories?
Yeah, common categories, you know. I don't like the team room here, the stairs are too, the elevator is too small. Library is too, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know what the feedbacks are, there's not enough parking. I know what some of the feedbacks are.
But the teams also love having the space.
Oh, yeah.
There's equal feedback for appreciation that they're not being yelled at. I did hear that comment from our Dungeons and Dragons group. Nobody yells at us anymore, so.
And that's just as valuable as back as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they won't be yelled at in their new space either, so they'll be good.
We're hoping to make everybody happy in our new space.
One, one other thing, just an impression I've gotten from talking to people who voted against, who actually spoke against the previous bill. And then hearing from some of those people, it's probably people that, when the price was, price tag was thirty-nine million dollars, people went, ah. When the price tag is to the fifteen million dollars, they go, hmm, that might work. So that's not going to be universal, but it's, it's very encouraging to me, so.
Well, and the senior said, you know, when you give that number, people were.
Yeah, they said, oh, okay, that's reasonable, so.
Yeah, so.
So.
It's a good update, we thank you. We thank you for all your work too.
Oh, man, thank you all for.
Absolutely huge.
You must see this in your dreams.
No, that was back, uh, last Christmas. I, I think that's literally true though, that I was dreaming about those meetings.
The numbers and the numbers, you just have like a blank slate there and the numbers are all over.
Scott Collins.
I mean, those are some really impressive meetings though. I, I couldn't go to the one yesterday, I was so bummed because I, I love those meetings. Really an impressive group of people and I love how much you're really.
So much.
Well, I like how much you're really listening to the community. You know, this isn't people saying, let's make the most expensive project we can and let's make it how exactly we want it. It's a group of, a big group of people who are really trying to figure out how to do exactly what the community wants.
But they've been doing it for like twelve years now.
This committee's only been around for maybe three.
Well, the new committee. Some people have been on the old committee too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Including yourself.
Yeah.
And it was never our objective to do the most expensive project.
Well, that wasn't saying.
No, I'm so sorry, no, no, no.
That's never the goal.
I didn't, and I didn't mean to say that at all, please don't think that, anybody, because I didn't try to say that.
When, when will we know the order of the warrant?
It's already posted.
Oh, so where are we?
We are almost sixteen.
Sixteen.
In the draft that went forward.
Yeah, we're around the middle.
Yeah. And the date is Saturday, um, twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Yeah.
And what kind of days?
The third, the night.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, that's going to be either late the first night or early the second day, I would think.
Oh, really? So we're going to go all Saturday and then we're going to go to Monday?
Probably, there's, there's something like forty, I don't know, forty plus articles.
Feels like a two-dayer to me.
Yeah.
We'll see.
And there's, there are eight or ten or twelve citizen petitions at the end. So you won't have to stay for those if you don't want to, I have to be there, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to do it against those, so personally.
Wish us.
And they used to have it the previous weekend, more around St. Patrick's Day.
Yes, this seems, this seems late.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't know why, but. The magic calendar. That brings us to town board committee presentation and dates coming up that we're on.
Do you want to cover town meeting article discussion?
Does anyone have any questions about the town meeting?
I'll say, it's, it's written except we need to add the dollar note.
Right, which is not firm yet, so.
At this point, this is a solid money, so we'll change that.
We have a meeting in February, so we can.
Yeah, we'll be on the sixth, we should, you should be able to put it over in there after that meeting.
Yeah, and if for some reason, yeah, and with it being the twenty-third, we have time to prove that before that books are printed, so.
Yeah.
We'll look after that. We don't have any particular dates coming up just yet.
We don't have dates yet for the town board and committee presentations. So that would be the advisory finance committee, select board, and anybody else that we need to present to. I haven't reached out to schedule those because I don't have a number yet, so there's nothing to talk about with that until we know what that is, which we will soon, on Tuesday. But I will let you all know what those dates are and moral support, backup is always a good thing for those, if you're able to attend.
And then public forum dates and locations, I think we're looking towards March for those.
Yep.
Beginning of March and then we'll get a calendar out on those because we don't have those set yet.
All of the things you put out with, that you're going to need to work on, those are not dedicated, but.
Good.
Trying to put it out there, yeah.
Yeah.
So then for building or building committee related issues, building wise, we have the fix. We're all set up and running with that finally for the.
With that one, yes.
With that one and going across our fingers that no other meeting is going to go.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes. We now have to have leaks. We're trying to track down the source of them. We haven't been able to yet, but when we had all of the rain and the fog, we had a big leak in the adult section near the reference desk. So if you came in the last couple of days, there are ceiling tiles missing. There was a trash can under it catching the water. And there's nothing we can do until the snow melts up on the roof, so we can get up there and look at it. But Cliff went out and pushed snow around a little bit to see if he could find it. And it looked like all the roof drains are clear, so nothing's backed up there. So we just have to try and trace what is causing that. It's on the flat roof and prior to that, when we had the torrential rains a couple of weeks ago, we had a leak in Lynn's office.
And the chim, it's like coming down through the chimney from that back wall and then going down into the team room, but, yeah.
And we had one over like the end panel of the first row of fiction books. Didn't get the books wet, it just got carpeted, so.
Where's that one, I'm sorry?
In the adult section, the first row of fiction books. It was right in front of the end panel on the shelf, so it didn't get books. But that roof is definitely, it's.
Sounds like fifteen years past end of life.
Yeah, it's, it's so far past end of life.
That's what that rhymes, the crying.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So that's.
I have two.
Whole town has leaky roofs.
Other issues.
In public space.
Yeah. One is, last month we talked about the, the parking, the congregational church's parking lot. And Christie Williams, the town manager, has called a meeting for that. I don't think the time is set, but we'll be discussing that issue probably sometime next week.
Actually, that's their move now.
Oh, okay.
Later in check.
I'm going to send out another email.
Okay. And the other one is, you may already know this, last month you voted in favor of the American for Disabilities Act statement that the building committee drafted. Thank you, by the way. And the select board also unanimously supported that in their meeting a week, a month or so ago. So. We, the building committee, were very pleased to see that.
Okay, so that brings us to strategic planning timeline. So it's that time again.
It is that time again. Deb Hoadley, our consultant, is going to be starting to work on the project with us in March. It'll be some internal work that we'll be doing first in March. And also because we want to get past town meeting. We had originally intended to start in January, but she was dealing with elderly parent who was ill and has since passed away. So she was trying to just kind of push things out a little bit, but still keep us on our timeline to have it completed by around October first. So just know that that's, it hasn't fallen off the radar, it is coming and we'll be starting, you'll be starting to hear more about that in March, April.
Sounds good.
You said with the goal of being done by.
October first.
Welcome. And with that, we're back on schedule for policy revision, let's look at meeting room use first.
So this one, we just had a couple of changes that we needed to make.
Is that on the typical project?
Yes.
I think I couldn't open that one.
I didn't see that.
There.
Oh, good, the meeting room one?
Yes.
Yeah, that one.
I couldn't open either.
Couldn't. I did everything else I could open, that was the only one I couldn't open.
Oh. So what we were looking at is in the second paragraph to keep things in line with all discussions we've had about how people can use the space, about video recording, about that we can't limit use of space in any way that would violate people's First Amendment rights. We can put restrictions on the use of space, like time and, but time and what was the other one, how to? Time and manner, time and manner, but not content. So my recommendation was to take out the parts that are strike throughs on this page. And then down in the bullets to change lower level meeting room to galfond meeting rooms, to be specific. And I have one other issue that is not on here, but it came up again today. And I wanted to get your thoughts and maybe some wording into our policy about people using this room or library space in general for Zoom calls. The situation today was a patron who was doing a, a therapy session. Her computer in a public space and.
Was she the therapist?
She was the patient.
She was the patient, yeah.
Is that what counts as individual use?
And, well, it was in a meeting.
Space or was it in?
It was in this room, but it's happened in like spaces upstairs as well, on the main floor, that we have patrons taking a business Zoom call. This person with therapy sessions and we don't have, really have anything in our policies about that. We don't have a private place to send anyone for that type of use.
I assume it wasn't reserved for.
It was not reserved. And the door was open because it was tutoring hours and there was a tutor working with a student.
Oh.
Well, she's.
In the same room.
In the same room.
Ooh, that's a choice.
So staff, staff asked her to take her call elsewhere. I don't know how that was received or what the outcome of it was because it was as I was going out the door. And I did, I haven't heard back from anyone yet.
So I feel for that person who clearly needs a space and that's, I would imagine a common problem. But we don't have the ability to accommodate that here because we don't have private spaces. But I don't think that would go under the meeting room policy, I think that would go under our library use policy. So let's put that on for next month to look at that and sort that out.
I mean, you can watch a meeting, like I could watch a building committee meeting with my headphones on.
Right.
But to talk and participate in a public space just doesn't seem.
Well, that's.
Well, let's, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
Let's put that on for next month and like mull that over because I think there's a lot of.
Yeah, I think that there's layers.
Yeah.
Like you have the pods, like.
Right, which we're, right, if we have those pods.
Yeah.
It, it's, it seems to me that, well, that is, that's clearly an individual use, so it's not going to be. But, but people taking business calls in the library, if they can do it without disturbing any of the patrons, which is a very open question.
Yeah, right.
Of.
Yeah, so there's that, like, I mean, we could have a conversation.
Yeah.
And so could someone have a conversation on the computer? So be thinking about those things in the next month and what your thoughts are on them, maybe do some search about that.
Some people are very discreet, some people are loud talkers.
Right, but they could be loud talkers on Zoom or they could be loud talkers outside, but either way, well, and put that on next month.
As we're pondering it, I just want to make sure I'm pondering the right question.
Yep.
Are we pondering people doing that anywhere in the library?
I think we're going to talk all about it.
Okay.
For, because that will go under library use.
And the question is, people using in the library, doing like Zoom for whatever reason.
Yep, or business calls.
For business, for, for whatever.
What they can follow.
But it's where they're, it's like interactive, they're doing more than listening.
Right, right, that is what we're going to.
Do we have, we have a phone policy, don't we?
We did, but it's very outdated.
Standing in the rest of the.
Yeah, another one to look at.
Yeah.
There we go.
Because those two could kind of parallel.
I, we'll put them both up for next month and then we'll look into them both at the same time.
But we're going to be shifting space around.
We are, but it's going to be at least a year plus for that, so I think.
And this is an issue now that you need to address.
Other libraries might have policy on this, it would be.
Well, I think that's what we'll do.
We'll do some research.
Search over the next month.
Okay.
Oh, do you want to?
But let's go back to this, yes.
On the leading, I, I didn't read to that side, but do you say anything about privacy? It seemed that in a public space in the library, you wouldn't, people should not have an expectation for privacy.
In the meeting room?
Yeah, if they're, if they're, if they're having a meeting in this room, they shouldn't.
It's open to the public.
Open to the public, yeah. So there is no.
It does say, it does say that meetings must be free and open to the public.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's correct.
That covers it. I don't have any problem with the changes made out here. But before, wait, do they even have any questions before we get into discussion? Because then I'll take a motion to accept it and then we will talk about discussion.
And it just, I guess going back to what happened with the person doing the call while also tutoring was going on. I mean, that seems like, so back here, walk-in, this use of library space. So I guess if this were empty and not being used, someone has the option of doing a walk-in, you know, of using it, but they would have to go to the circulation desk to set that up, right?
Right.
And then also, but when this happened, when the.
That would be considered personal use, so it wouldn't be accepted for them to come here.
Okay, okay.
That's more like if a group of people are here and they're like, oh, meeting room open, let's, instead of meeting about it, let's go see if we can just meet about it in the room. But if it's a one person just being like, oh, that room's open, let me go have my call.
Yeah, but it's usually when it's not in use, it's usually close them off.
Right, right.
But this time it was in use.
Right.
Which is kind of the violation of.
Right, right, it was already reserved for a different purpose at that point.
Could, when construed tutoring is individual or maybe commercial use? Because a tutor's getting paid to help one person.
Yes, we've gone around and around about this.
Yeah.
Right, because they used to have the tutoring tables, they used to do tutoring out of the public tables.
Yeah.
And then the alternative was to give them the space here to do tutoring so that it didn't take up those tables.
And a long time ago, Karen might remember, and Jim, we talked about, should we allow tutoring to take place in the library? And we concluded yes, because we wanted to support the education of our kids and give tutors and kids a safe, neutral kind of place. Because I don't think they're allowed to do it at the school.
No, no, it shuts down.
Tutors, you don't really, may not want to have tutoring in a tutor's home.
Or in a student's home.
Or in a student's home, so where do you go?
I, I think you may want to carve out an exception for tutoring.
Right, yeah.
It would be ridiculous.
That's, that's why we have a separate tutoring policy.
Yeah, there's no money to change his hands.
Sorry, it's, it's going back to the Zoom thing, I mean, there's a lot of tutoring that happens over Zoom these days. So it's going to, it's going to raise that issue, can that happen in the library or not?
That, I would say it can happen during tutoring hours in this room.
Okay.
Because it's, the expectation is not, it's only one tutor and one student, it's open to multiple tutors with sessions going on and they can come and go. But, yeah. No money is allowed to change hands for our tutoring policy, they have to deal with that off-site themselves. You don't handle money, they can't exchange money here, they have to.
Talk about money, charge money.
Right.
So tutoring is not in here, tutoring is in a separate.
Separate policy, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I will move to accept the meeting space policy with the markup shown here.
Does anyone have any further discussion, questions on it? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the policy as written in front of us? All those? Great. Thanks so much. All right, so then, um, that brings us to display policy.
So there's copies of that policy on the table as well. We have a display policy that's one paragraph that just says that, and I didn't bring it, if that's what I was looking at in my notebook for.
So I have a question. Are we looking at this as a new policy or revision, so then it's a one, one-time vote only?
Yeah.
We don't need to, we don't need to bring it up?
No.
Again, okay, great.
And what we had was just that, um, it was, in a nutshell, it's at the discretion of the library what we think, we're not responsible for anything that is displayed, and, um, the person who wants to display it assumes all responsibility. We thought we needed a little more than that. So, um, Lynn, Lynn drafted what you see here, which I think is pretty thorough and gives everybody that, who wants to do a display, the option and the ability to do a display.
And this is on the wall space on the ramp.
Yeah, so in the, I mean, typically, we've had, like, nursery schools have the hang I know, I was going to ask like And civic clubs put their posters, and we had a request for, from a citizen who wants to do a display on Ramadan, and that is totally within their rights, but we didn't have a policy, because we might anticipate that we would get other people who want to hang their displays as well. And so we needed to come up with something that makes sense and is appropriate for the space.
Is this at the top of the stairs?
This is on the ramp, the wall.
Probably across the ramp from the fairy garden.
Oh.
Artwork, this is great, I thought it
Where there's a lot of, oftentimes, children's artwork.
Yeah.
Yes, like that's from other schools. I have two suggestions, and I don't know if, but one is like a guideline one and one is just a logistics one. Are, what are our thoughts on a single, a single person doing it multiple times? You know, do you know what I mean? Like, I don't want a still open policy where someone could book it or reserve it to continually put up. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Of any, right, I think it should be, but, and then my other, so I think that's
So, well, so individuals, we're trying to kind of, we say Westboro groups and organizations. So that's not a specific individual.
But even that, even that, one organization's ability to do it all the time would then limit any other ability to, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So I feel like there should be some structure around how many times a individual organization could do it in a time period, maybe, like a six, like once in a six-month period or something like that, just so that it gives equal opportunity for other people to
Right.
Put it out there. And then my other, I think this is fantastic, and I should start off with that. I, I love that, and I love, this is the community's library, it's a community space, I love seeing that. But I think without some sort of delineation that this is a community board space, wall space, display space, it would be confusing to say that if you walked in and saw hatred of brown bears up there, to say that that's a Westboro Public Library, hates brown bears. So I would think, is there a way we could either, like, paint a rectangle that says, like, community space, like, so that it's really clear that this designated, things that are designated and displayed in this area are community, like, like define the space somehow. I don't know if that, then it needs to be in here, which, could we do something like
But like a plaque? Um, just
I would almost
Our disclaimer or?
Yes, but also, like, I'm not, I'm not sure that's big enough. So like, in my mind, I'm totally going educator route, like, on, like, bulletin board, border, you know, so like, hey, this is a defined space with a plaque that, or a description or something, but that just defines that, hey, this is different than, like, this is a community space for display and not the Westboro Public Libraries.
And both, I think having both up there, having a nice, big
Something.
Well, I'm seeing the elementary school.
I know.
I want you to say, like, a policy educator.
It says, you know, community space, and then under it, um, doesn't reflect the blah-blah of the libraries.
Yeah, right, right, like, something like, like, I'm going to celebrate the fact that this is a community space, but also be like
And I don't know, we could do that easily in a temporary way.
Right.
With a banner.
Okay.
That we, that could be hung
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Above, and some type of, I'm just, like you said, painted by
Right, like, just, yeah, like
Flowered tape.
Right, something.
Just a thought, it says designated public display space, parentheses, wall space on the ramp. Don't even say wall space on the ramp, particularly if you put up a sign and tape.
Well, I mean, just that would basically say you would know.
No, I would just say designated, because that way, for whatever reason you want to change your mind, instead of make something else, you can just do it.
Right, true. So strike out, I like that.
Is there a, like, a length of time that's, that they're generally, um,
Uh, it's within 30 days. Thirty days.
Maximum 30 days, I guess, because that's your movement.
Well, that's, that's disposed of if not claimed, so if that
Oh, you're right, you're right.
That means if you, if you take it, if we, the library, take it down because they've forgotten about it, we don't have to keep it for 30 days.
How long typically when the preschools put up their stuff, how long do they usually stay up doing their
About a month.
Okay.
So, like, yeah.
And so, Maureen, is that where you put the flyer for the senior center that they sent you? On that wall?
No.
Those go on the wall as a reward.
Look, out here is a community bulletin board on the wall.
So how's that different?
That's our space.
I know, but the senior, no, not our flyer, I mean, the seniors that have sent you a flyer and asked you to post it.
That's like, we have public bulletin board space that is designated for people's flyers, that type of thing, and then this is a, like, public display.
This would be a display or art display or Not, not, not announcing events, but, like, this woman asked about doing a display about Ramadan, or if we wanted a display of, um, the Lions Club does their peace posters.
Okay.
And they hang them on that, so it would be that type of display.
So for community flyers.
How is that different from the art displays you have up on the main floor?
Those are, that's, those are juried artists, and there's a whole committee that goes on it. That's a whole different animal. It's a gallery space, like.
I wondered if we needed to put anything in here, if it's just, it's implied, unless I even missed that it was in here, something like, um, that the display can't, needs to be consistent with our code of conduct.
We were trying to keep it as vague as possible because we don't want to infringe on anybody's, I mean, I think by saying that it has to be, I mean, obviously, I mean, it can't be obscene or
Right.
Going against any of that.
So, and we do have in here that the library has the right to review the materials in advance, and the library
Right, that's why, like, it's sort of a lie. That's
I, I was, another implied thing that I told you, is you have to conform to whatever laws apply, or what they are, but, you know, if there's an obscenity law that still, still stands, that would
Like, yeah, yeah, we don't allow hate speech, we don't allow
No hate speech, exactly.
So that, we would just refer back to that policy and say
Yeah.
To our library use policy.
Yeah, like, we wanted to leave this as vague as possible because we figured this is
But I agree, we have a way to cover that under here.
Who is reviewing the, um?
Great question.
That would be me.
So let's put that in there, the library director has the right to review. Can we, I, can we change that to the library director will review?
Yeah.
Because I think it should just be reviewed regardless if something moves, so we should know what's going up there.
I have one wording change. It's in the fifth bullet right now, it's all displays must be set up, removed with little interference to the daily operations of the library, not to, without causing significant interference to the daily operations of the library. And it's stronger and more refined, it gets what you want.
Do people use this a lot? I'm sorry.
That's just a total thought. You want to have the applicant actually sign it? We've got the checkmarks that they read, understand, and agree to follow it, but they haven't signed it.
Do people use this display place a lot?
We do have, like, like I said, the nursery schools and different clubs, but we've never had other outside groups ask about it.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
So maybe we can let more people know about it, too.
I mean, I could even say, like, if, if one of the scouts is doing their Eagle Project or their Gold Pro, Award Project, like, it's another great place to inform people about
If you're sure they're at some kind of collaborative project.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, maybe something to mention in the talks that we're doing so people know that exists, that it's a resource they have.
Sure.
I also wanted to add in a line for their full address.
Okay.
Is it?
Yes, for Westboro. Does anyone else have any other edits or questions or concerns about this policy as is in front of us? Okay.
Make a motion to accept the policy as written.
Thank you.
As written or as amended?
As amended.
I will second accepting as amended.
Excellent. All in favor? Great, seeing none opposed? That is, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us up to open items list. Which apparently we need to fill out Maureen's form. Sorry. Let me just pull it up.
My form?
Your Google.
Yes.
On my Google form.
Can you resend that, like, to people? Thank you.
I think she just put it in the open items list. I think Deb just put the link in the open items list.
We're going to have to look at the open items list.
Yes.
I will resend it to you, don't worry.
Which won't open for me, so I might not have an open items list. Am I still connected?
Yep.
I'm still connected. Deb, do you have the open items list open? It's not opening for me here.
I will do it. I shared it a while ago so everybody could do it, but I guess it's
Sorry. It's, okay, it's just not opening any tabs.
So I am very proud that even before our meeting, I added in that everybody should submit their bio in photo to Maureen.
Yay. And it's still open.
And I add, but if, but if nobody can see it, it's not really helpful. I even added in the link so you could go and do it.
You're trying, you're trying so hard.
Somebody else is on there.
No, like, my computer's not on there.
It's in the tabs.
Okay, good.
So that's in there, old things, um, one was the trustee testimony, that is old, 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 that's done, uh, was still on there that's open. The quarterly newsletter is ongoing. Bird display, I know a lot because I missed, I think the last two, I was sick last meeting, and I missed one for that also, but I loved reading.
It's amazing.
I loved reading the minutes, hearing everything about the bird display, it was so exciting for me. So, yes, I don't, is that
It's on.
Is it open or?
We, um, I need to follow with the equitarian guy, so.
In your free time.
Maybe I should change the description, we're no longer verifying the safety of the bird display now. What should, how should I write it?
Actually, you were going to check out with him in February, because that was going to be about mid of the project. So Ed's going to, um, get a status update on the bird display from Martin at Equitarian.
And explore the possibility of restoration.
Right, and that's, that's what the, he's doing the little one, and he's going to say, and he'll probably, but the plan is he'll say, okay, it took me X hours to do this little one, so it'll take me Y hours to do the big one, and then go to his boss and say, how much should I charge him for this? So.
And we have the money in our funds, so we don't have to ask for anything, right?
Well, it's going to depend on what comes.
Depends.
It depends. Then we'll see how much we love it, a bird is
Was there anything from tonight that I needed to add?
Can I, can I maybe make some suggestion? When I was, um, here over the weekend, I think this was a weekend a half ago, and I met two of the children's librarians, Michelle was out there and Karen, and, um, I don't really know the library staff. So I was thinking maybe we could, like, somehow get together with the librarians. They mentioned that they have monthly staff meetings, I think, so I was thinking that maybe we could make an effort to, I mean, it's never going to work for everyone to obviously attend one, but maybe over the course of the next few months, try to make it to one of the meetings and just kind of, who's there and just kind of, because I kind of feel like it would kind of remove some, um, from sort of the ins and outs of life.
I really love to do that.
They're a lot more, obviously, like, so. And actually, they also said specifically, they, as children's librarians, they would really like to, like that, because sometimes they feel like it's more adult-focused, which I, I mean, I don't necessarily think that's the case, but, but it would be good to
I think when we use the library, we're always going to the adult part because we're adults, and if we don't have kids, we don't, I don't have any reason to come down any We were having staff come to the meeting periodically when we had to stand for a while, but that's probably a burden on them.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if we could just set it, because I don't want to invade their staff meeting and feel like we're trying to
Yeah.
Libromanage, but if we could set up, maybe we could do a trustee's breakfast
I would love to plan something fine.
Also, and with, with, we're going to have new people, too, that may be a different to, um, have to do that.
Yeah.
So we'll work on that. Lynn, put that on the open items list.
Absolutely.
Can you also put on there, um, organization of candidates night?
Organization of what?
Candidates night?
Oh, candidates night, yes.
Can you put Maureen that?
This is, not necessarily, but I'm going to mention it because I don't see it as a general thing or, um, I've been trustee, I've been treasurer for a long time.
I gotta pause you on that. I gotta pause you on that, because, oh, we're going to come back to that.
Okay. Consider me paused.
Yes, usually we put in trustee, we left that off the agenda.
Who is organizing the candidates night?
Maureen.
Okay.
Trustee items, welcome, welcome. Let's just get through these last few things. Secretary, all right, let's move on to approval of secretary's report, approval of December minutes and action minutes.
Sorry, I didn't print those.
That's all right. Ever have a chance to review them? Okay. Yeah, all looked good to me.
Yep.
I'll take a motion to
I'm going to accept the minutes. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any changes? Great, all in favor? That brings us to treasurer's report. I am assuming
Oh, I have to abstain from that, I'm sorry.
I feel like we need to redo that, but, sorry, I want to be very official on that.
So we're going to, you want to redo?
Yep, let's redo a motion.
Okay, uh, Joe, you moved to accept it. Okay, Joe, you moved to accept it.
Yes.
And I'll second again.
All in favor of accepting the minutes? All opposed? Any abstain? Two abstain, thank you. Such a rare occurrence, but also. Right, treasurer's report, I'm assuming that the, where was I? I just wanted to repair ones. Repair maintenance equipment is because of the fix of the heating coil, it's at 111%?
No.
Okay, where does that fall in? H1?
No, actually, that's not gonna be paid out of our budget, that is being paid for out of insurance.
I thought we had.
The town's insurance.
I thought we had a co-pay, or it's a deductible. We have a $1,000 deductible.
We'll pay $1,000, we haven't had.
That hasn't been.
Yeah, that hasn't, we haven't found that yet.
They've talked about it, they've got some insurance instead.
5202.
That's our H backline.
In the next couple of months, that is going to be well over, because our maintenance agreement hits, and we have one visit that has not been billed yet.
Okay.
So you get quarterly maintenance, so every quarter they come, they do the service, and then they bill us. And it's, the payment for the service contract is billed quarterly. So we have two that haven't been billed yet, plus the $1,000 that I forgot about.
Definitely.
That, that mine is gonna be over, so our plan for that is to do a reserve, a reserve fund transfer request to the advisory finance committee when we get to that point.
Okay.
We were gonna do it ahead of time, seeing that this was coming, and they told us to wait. I've never had to do that before, and it feels really weird, but that's, we're gonna have to.
What fell into repair and maintenance that pushed it over?
That was our Johnson Controls, which is our alarm company, and the contract went up this year. Everything went up, just a little bit more than we expected.
It happened?
Yeah.
That reminds me, this is maybe unrelated, how is the new control system working?
Beautifully.
Good.
Yeah, there's one last little piece that he has to install on the, the unit on the roof, but he can't do that when it's like eight degrees or snowing, so it'll be a little bit longer on that.
But we can actually control the heat again?
We can.
Yay. That's what the Juggles say, it was funny.
It got very quiet in here, I don't know if you all noticed at 8 o'clock, because the system went off, because that's closing time, but, and I tried to log in from down here, but my connection isn't strong enough in this room to connect to it, or I was gonna turn it back on, but it feels comfortable in here, so I think we're all right.
I don't think I'm holding us much longer, so we're good.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what were the costs for repair and maintenance this month?
The alarm, that was the one up.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions? All right, I'll take a motion to accept the treasurer's report. Dot, someone second it? All in favor? None opposed? Dot's are off.
I did, Dot raised her hand, Dot.
I know I have a great hearing, but I didn't hear a thing.
Sorry, I saw it all go down for this.
Dot made the report.
Fabulous, Dot made the motion.
Okay.
To accept the treasurer's report. Kate raised her hand to second it. No problem. Wow. I'm sorry. Approaching 9 o'clock.
You know Mary was psychic, didn't you?
All in favor of approving the treasurer's report as presented? Anyone opposed? Any abstain? Thank you so much. I don't have a Friends or Foundation update this morning.
Nothing to me with the Foundation. Friends had their annual meeting last night and re-elected their officers for the year. I presented a budget to them, and they approved it, and then they unapproved it afterward because we realized there was a math error. And it was significant, it was the, the way the formula carried over on my spreadsheet was outrageously incorrect, so I'm gonna be working with staff to redo the budget, and they will revote.
Same officers?
Same officers, yeah.
Great.
Just for those of us with decrepit memories.
Who were the officers again? Oh, sorry, Kevin Johnson is the president, Wendy Tony is the secretary, and Sandy... Sandy? Do you remember Sandy's last name? Mary was there too. I don't remember Sandy's last name. Is the secretary.
No, I thought you said Wendy was the secretary.
Sorry, Wendy's the treasurer.
Oh, okay.
Sandy is the secretary.
Thank you.
Fabulous, okay. Now I'm gonna jump, it should be on there, is a trustee issues, that's all, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so as I was saying, I've been treasurer for a long time, maybe 14 years, something like that, and I might need to step down from that, the building committee's taking up too much time, I'm starting to slip things. Yeah, I, yeah. So I'll step down probably in April after, after the new trustees come on, and we'll be voting for new officers. But, so if anyone's interested in becoming treasurer, I more than want to hand it over, and I can brief anyone who wants to know what the job entails.
Can they give us a quick rundown?
The very quick rundown is every week, Lynn sends me a list of, a copy of all the library's invoices that I've painted, slipped, it sums them up, and sometimes it's three or four sets of documents, depending on how many. And you look at them, I was asked 14 years ago, make sure that all the numbers added up, because sometimes those get deleted from the spreadsheet, and then you approve them and send them back. And I actually have, I made a rubber stamp in Acrobat, so I can just stamp all the files with it. And I have been, like I said, I've been behind, actually Lynn has my stamp on file now, so she's been stamping for me, so, and, so there's not really a deadline for me to, me to do it myself, and so I haven't been doing it very much. So I've been, as I said, far behind. It's not a lot of work, we do have to do it every week, or find a substitute to do it for you, any trustee can do it. And to my mind, it gives you some very interesting insight into library operation, because you're seeing where the money goes, at least, except for the salaries, but, except for, you see the marine salary, but everybody else is under a union contract, and they don't come through the treasurer, but, but that was sort of my early warning about the whole ebook thing, they're all $30 or $40 a piece.
Well, you've done a fantastic job for us for a very long time, so if anyone has any, so we thank you for that, but I can totally understand why your time is being taken out by the library building committee. So if it had reached out and asked if you want, we wanted him to speak about China, I said, yep, because definitely plant the seeds of thinking about that after our elections in March, we typically reorganize the board for all the positions, so chair, vice chair, treasurer, secretary, and recording secretary are all up, so, or we reorg every year, and so if you are interested in any of those positions or learning more about it, please ask the person who is in that now, no one will be offended if you want to know what their job is like. But I was also thinking that since, and I thought this last year too, when we had like new people join the board, and then like, yay, welcome, tonight we're reorganizing the board, it just feels like a lot, and you haven't had a chance to really acclimate yet, and so I wanted to see what everyone thought about pushing that a month of reorganizing April this year instead of March, just to give everyone a chance to start understanding the role a little bit and getting into positions and that, and then we'll talk about changing it up. Great. That's all I had, does anyone else have any other library trustee issue? So the 8:54, we'll take a motion to, oh, wait, agenda items for next library meeting, I have library use policy and the telephone policy.
What is the date of our next meeting? Is it the 3rd?
Date of our next meeting is the 21st, February 21th.
That's not. It's the week after February.
It's the week after February. Library use policy and the phone policy, telephone policy?
It's not, it's not library use policy, we renamed it Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct.
So it's Code of Conduct and cell phone policy.
And then that question of Zoom?
That's in there. In one of those, we're gonna be figuring that out, so do your research. Do your stuff some more. Now it is 8:55, but I'll take a motion to.
So.
Dot made the motion. Kate seconded it. All in favor of joining our meeting? Anyone opposed? Want to hang out Maureen? Thank you, everybody, and thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.